Start the recording. Thank you all for coming. Um, we'll start with approval of minutes. We got those right after Bill. Thank you very much. Where is, uh, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Or second?
Second, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, any communication other than the agenda? You're muted. Let me get you. I don't know what she just said. Mayor, you left. Well, we'll wait for her to come back.
Okay, um, you know, I think that we just re-cashed our call orders around, you know, the fall school.
She's taking a phone call. Kind of need her for the first item, which is the...
You may want to mute her, Dan.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Um, let's jump to something that's more in Val and Jen's bellywork. How about the workers' comp budget? Uh, we're gonna start with that one instead of the legal budget. I assume this is typical end of year catching up Val, Jen for the workers' comp budget?
Yeah, they, they only have, uh, $468.55 budget left. And I, I talked to Bob. His thinking is that we may have some, um, claims because of the COVID. And so they asked him what he thought he would need, and he said about 15,000.
Is this Bob, the Human Resource Director?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? This seems straightforward. We typically get these every year. End of year catch-ups and budgets that are short. Bill, okay, anybody?
No question.
Any questions, Bill? Omar, any questions?
No.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve 15,000 for the workers' comp.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, aye.
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 The next one that I'll do without the mayor is the 30,000. Again, we're catching up on Medicare tax, which we have to pay. And we estimate it based on last year's. Could you go over how we estimate, Val?
I'm not sure exactly how Melissa estimated it for the budget last year, but I can tell you that, there's a couple of ways you could do it. You could use the city budget and the school budget and add some and project it out. But the problem is there are also people paid through grants and revolving accounts. And then we have all the, um, union contracts and the school contracts that renew at the beginning of the next year. And we really have no idea, you know, what those are gonna be. So it's, it's always a kind of a crap shoot figuring out exactly what it needs to be. Um, and I think one of our solutions going forward is every time we have a, a contract that is approved and we put in for funding for the budget lines, we should also put in for the Medicare at the same time. You know, but the school, yeah, it's pretty hard to tell because, like I said, the school, they do all their contracts in the beginning of the next fiscal year. Um, and they give, you know, bonuses and things and, and some of the parks, the rec department pays out of their revolving accounts. You know, council on aging pays out of revolving and they move things around all over the place. So it's really tough to estimate it.
Well, we're paying it every year. We always pay a little catch-up.
Right, right.
You have anything else to add, Jen? Did you hear me, Jen? Do you have anything else to add?
Yes, no, I, I heard you. I was just unmuting. Um, no, I don't have anything else to add. I mean, you know, it's, uh, it's not a, um, an exact science. So even if we, you know, came up with some awesome formula, I can guarantee we'd still be having this conversation next year at this time, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes?
Um, so what, can either of you tell me what the budgeted line item for this, what the amount was?
Do you have that, Val?
Yeah, initially, it was budgeted for 300,000. And that's adding this, the school line item was 176,000 and the city was 124,000. That comes to the 300,000. And at this point, they've already extended 238,96645, and we still have six and a half payrolls to go, so.
Okay. How many more payrolls? I'm sorry, Val.
Well, it's six and a half for the city and six for the school 'cause their first payroll on July 5th is the next fiscal year. Ours is for June 30th. You know, um, so, yeah, there's, the average, I, I would say the average, uh, one payroll is about 11,941. It goes up and down all over the place depending on what's going on, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Bill? Do you have any questions?
No.
Nothing, Bill?
No.
Omar, do you have any questions if you're still there? I lost, he lost his video. Um, I guess I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve 30,000 to catch up on Medicare tax. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. Okay. I don't know what to do. I think Zoe, you were the one that sent us all the legal invoices and accounting. I appreciate that. That was very handy.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
But my questions are for the mayor, but I think we'll start with, uh, somebody who can answer these. I'm gonna share the screen. I'm looking at the entire legal report, which I believe came to us from... Does everybody see this legal expense ledger?
Yep.
Bill, you see it? Bill, do you see this?
Yep. Also.
No, Bill.
Yes, I do. I'm trying. My computer's kaput.
It's interesting, but I believe Clifford and Kenny is the legal, uh, is the collective bargaining attorneys. Am I correct on that? If someone could answer that?
I could, well, I, as far as I know, Dan, that, that they are, but I think you're looking for someone from the city.
Yeah, I am looking. Well, Val or Jen, do you know anything about these bills?
Uh, I do, um, I mean, without looking into the specifics, Val would know more each individual line item, being that they post them, but Clifford and Kenny is gonna be anything labor-related. So obviously it would be the renegotiation of the contracts. Um, and, you know, we did have some, I know we did get a few opinions from him, um, surrounding the COVID. Um, you know, just when people started working from home and, you know, how do we account for things, make them fair and that sort of thing? So if there's any that are, you know, of that date, of those dates, then that would be, um, that would be those. Uh, as far as, uh, let's see, Bacon and Wilson, I think is Mark Tanner.
Hi, and, and I see it was.
And then, uh, the other one I saw in here, Fussin' O'Neil, they do, um, design work. They're, they're about the, um, they're more the, they're project-focused in terms of this being miscellaneous. Um, don't...
But they are attorneys, aren't they attorneys?
Yes, but they, it has to do with projects, though. It's my understanding.
Well, it's specific to a type of legal work, but it is that they're attorneys. They're not designers. You said design, and I wasn't sure.
I, I, I didn't. I'm sorry. Um, but if you'll notice, that looks like it's at, oh, I missed it. That's at zero, so it gets...
I just wanted to know what they did 'cause I've not seen them before, but, okay.
That, again, maybe Val can tell by the dates. I...
I think it has to do with engineering, engineering contracts.
Yeah.
Engineering project legal services?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna de-share for a moment. Um, I need some advice, Peg. Should I call the mayor? I know we might have some questions on this, and I think the mayor can answer them the most.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, I don't know if we'll get her tonight, though. I don't know what's...
Well, she's there. She left her computer on, took a phone call. Let me text her and see if it helps. Peg, would you go knock on her door?
Yeah, I'm not leaving my house.
Uh, gee. It looks like we started at 65,000 with this budget for the year, 'cause I know last year we had to add money. And, uh, we're all the way to May, so... And we did have a lot of legal opinions needed for, um, Bacon and Wilson. And I noticed some names were crossed out. Some of those might be labor-related or personnel-related, I should say, I assume. But, uh, major opinions on some of our ordinances. Uh, I had one question. There was a $15,000 charge at the beginning of this fiscal year, and I didn't know if that was catching up or not. Um, let me share the screen again. I'll... You see this charge right here? Everybody see this charge? I'm kind of going over it with my mouse.
Yeah, see the, see the header for that, Dan? See the header? It says year-end encumbrance carryover. Those are, those are things encumbered from last fiscal year. That money is last year's money that was held over to pay those, those, that whole section.
Does that affect the 65,000 bottom line for the year?
No.
Oh, so...
See where it says 13,50550? That's what they held over from last year to pay bills that weren't paid last, not from last year.
All bills that went out of last year's fiscal year budget?
Yes.
Okay, this is a...
So that, so this year's would be only, uh, under the 531, where is it? 5319 line item up above.
I see the 65,000, and the first thing charged to that, well, there's 13,000 charged for different things, and that's yet...
No. That 13,50550 is the budget for the encumbrance.
Oh, got it.
See, it says year-to-date appropriation tran...
So that's added to the 65.
That's for last year's stuff.
Okay.
It was held over.
And that's why at the end of the page here, it says... I see the differences here. Okay. The, this figure right here, 66,000, is that year-to-date expenditures in this year's fiscal year? Are you seeing that on my page here? 66,116?
So, so they spent 52,61126 from this year's budget. Two items are added together at the bottom. That 66 is the encumbrance is plus this year's money. You have to scroll up to, uh, the bottom of the 5, uh, 5319. Is there a total there?
I don't know where to look.
Yeah, it would be on... It doesn't give you a subtotal. So this year's expenditures were 52,611 dollars and 26 cents. And that's all on that top line item, 5319. Just ignore the bottom. The bottom is all last year's stuff.
I'm not sure where you say 5319. Is that...
I have it on a printout. I have, that's a summary.
At the top, the summary?
It's the account, Dan, it's the account number, 001 dot 1510 dot 5319.
Look on the left.
Far left.
I got it, right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
That, see where it says professional services budget 65,000?
Right.
Okay, so all of those numbers below it are, um, this year's numbers.
So that, Val, is that, um, is the number you just gave us, the 52, whatever it was, is that through, when, when was this published? Uh, through April to date? All right, it looks like April 21st. So is this through April 21st?
I ran it today, and it picks up anything in April, all the way to end of April.
Okay, and so the other bills that were accompanied, the files that were accompanied, the invoices, are those included in this number, or should we take the 52,000 and add all those invoices to it?
This is the total they've spent for the year, 52,611 dollars and 26 cents.
Okay, so any invoices that Zoe attached, which were great, are already included in that 52,000?
Yes.
So all we're asked to do is, um, evaluate adding 15,000 more to that because you only have about 12.4,000 left. And we believe between now and July 1st, we're going to incur significantly more legal?
Yeah, they, they may even have bills they haven't submitted for payment yet for things that are hanging out there, too.
Okay.
All right, that's a big question, Peg, and I think the mayor can answer that. Unfortunately, she's not.
She's here.
Ah, yeah, you're back.
I'm back. My, my apologies. I'm sorry.
What, you got something else to do? Something going on in the city? I didn't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, I went for an ice cream cone.
All right.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I got thousand left.
Um, uh, we, we approved the other two items. They were relatively easy. The Medicare.
Thank you. Great.
The question I had, I, I did learn about what Foose, I forget the name of it, was. They did engineering legal services, I guess.
Yeah.
And Kenny does the labor, and Bacon Wilson is Mark, who does most of our other work.
Yes.
Val caught us up. There was some money that was carried over from last year, which is why the bottom line has a higher figure than the actual expenditure. Val said it's 52,611, which is what this year's fiscal year expenditures are.
Yep.
If we add the 15,000 you're requesting, that about 27,000 or give or take, that would be left for your, the rest of your year. So you anticipate much more work? And Val did mention there might be invoices that you're aware of that might be coming in, too, that of work that's already been done. It's not been reported yet.
My, my, um, yeah, we're, we, we have the invoices together, and actually Zoe is on this call.
We got a lot of them. I don't know if they're current or if they're...
Um, yeah, my bigger concern is that because of the staffing in Bacon Wilson in particular, that there might be bills that, that they're behind on billing us. And we've been pushing them to say, look, we, we need this. And we had a problem with them last year just with getting us bills before the end of the fiscal year, so I'm, I'm concerned about that. We also have a couple of labor negotiations, um, to be done. And, um, we also have easement work still to do on, uh, Union Street, maybe on Route 10 if, if we kind of hasten that project. A little bit of work to do on one ferry, but, but not a lot. And, um, and then just regular, I mean, we're doing a lot of policy work with Clifford and Kelly, Kenny, about, you know, how we're paying people, how we're using money. Um, the, you know, what are, what are vacation policies looking like, what they were? And I, I imagine we'll have a couple of, of more, um, you know, legal issues that we have to work with before we get clear guidance, um, from the state. And that's already happened a couple of times. Um, so it's, you know, I, I want to ask for the money sooner rather than later. Um, it would be delightful if we didn't use it. Um, but I think that there are a lot of unknowns. And, and I'm, you know, getting backup for a lot of these decisions under the declaration of emergency, so they, they'll hold afterwards.
Can I follow up on that? Is any of this money reimbursable because of COVID? For legal services like for staffing and labor, things like that?
I mean, maybe, maybe in theory, but remember, they, you know, FEMA, I mean, first we, we use the FEMA money, then we go for CARES Act, and then we try for the state. But right now, it's everything and anything related to COVID, so sure, maybe we could post some of these. And, and we'll try, but I've gotta think, they're not gonna give us 75% like they're saying, and they're gonna start shaving off professional services is what, what I'm hearing.
Okay, I'll turn it over to my other counselors. I don't have any other questions, Peg or Bill?
So just a quick question, Mayor, and you may have answered it, and I'm, I'm doing overkill here, I admit. So the budget was 65,000. And we know, based on the snapshot that Val gave us through today or yesterday, that the remaining amount is around 12.4,000. Yes. And you're asking for 15, and the invoices that Zoe gave us, should those be subtracted from the 12,000 you have left? Or are they already incorporated into what Val pulled? And I think Val told us that everything that the city has in terms of invoices should already be in the bucket that were. Yes. So, so what we're looking at is $27,000 worth of unknown charges for all the reasons you just gave. So none of it is known at this point of the 27,000 that you have left to spend. You know, inclusive of this 15,000 if we give it to you. Right. Okay, I just wanted to be like, really, my brain is functioning at about 30%, so I just wanted to... Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Bill?
Yeah, the only question I had is where did we grab the 15,000 dollars from? Just like what, why that number? I'm just curious.
Wait, why 15?
Why did you estimate 15 is his question?
Yeah.
It's coming from free cash. That, that's not his question. It's why, why 15? How did you come up with 15,000? Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, sorry.
Um, so a little bit is, um, looking back at past negotiations and what, what those expenses were. Um, and, and factoring that in, and also the easement work is, um, variable, you know, so if an easement, if, as we go, like, think about the, that Union Street property. We're starting up at Big East, and we're going all the way down to City Hall, and, and we have to take a lot of that sidewalk and widen the road. And we just don't know what, you know, how cooperative or how clear the title is on private property. So that's definitely kind of a wink and a, not like trying to figure out what that exactly will cost. And if we have an opportunity to go at those easements sooner rather than later, then it pushes up, um, the strength of our Union Street project. There, all these projects are, are tiered, so the faster we get through things we need to do, and easements are a big thing, um, the, the better. And, and we can start the project, you know, I doubt it'll be early now, given, you know, the pandemic, but hopefully on time. Um, so that's a part of it. And then also, like, the policy work, you know, of, of what, what will we need to negotiate or renegotiate with vendors, with unions, um, our personnel policy, how we treat certain leaves, how we staff the leaves, um, you know, that, that's a big issue. How, how we deal with, um, uh, testing, um, the, you know, as far as like, one thing in the back of my head that's getting more and more forward is, you know, reopening of, of businesses, whether they are the essential businesses who have restricted operation or non-essential businesses, and, and what we can do to really make safety plans. We just, we just had that with the school project and our, our public, um, construction projects where we needed to, to look over those plans and making sure that they were in line with current health orders and state orders in the contractors. So the 15 is based on what we spent in the past on those items and a little bit of the unknown of what, of what could come up.
Peg, I see a hand raised, Peg.
Yeah, right just then she answered the question I had, so I'm good.
Bill, do you have any follow-up?
Um, just on the, the easement thing, and I understand that would escalate a project. Is, is that project gonna happen, you know, this year? I, I mean, I, are there any concerns around, uh, funding from the state not gonna be there due to the pandemic and everything else? So do we really want to spend money doing that kind of stuff if that may not happen? And that's just another kind of, uh, thought process in the future that, that could be potential. I don't know. Have you thought of that?
Um, yeah, so we're, we've been awarded the money, and it's encumbered by the state. Um, and it's very competitive, so the, the more ahead we get on that project, and we just actually, um, put more money into doing the design work of it. So we're in a good place to, to go forward, and there is no indication whatsoever from state or federal funds that they will be pulled back because they're already in the transportation improvement project. Um, the city more than, than other grants, we're doing as far as like grant matching. We've put already a lot of our match in. And, and very candidly, um, we need the jobs, and that will be a job that can start regardless of where we are with the pandemic. Um, and the easements, there are just a lot of them. The, the faster we start. And again, if, and if we don't start on them or, or, you know, it's not that the money disappears into thin air. It just gets swept. You know, it's, it's not that I, I'm taking that money and go, okay, we, we only spent, you know, 5,000, so I've got 10,000 to, you know, I don't know, pay off half of Peg's car or, you know, whatever. It gets swept.
I understand that, and my car has a lot of payments left on it anyways, but, um, I'm just kidding, but...
You know, I, I'm sorry, yeah.
It makes a lot of sense.
We are being recorded, everybody.
I know, I know, I know. I'm sorry. A little crunchy. My apologies.
A lot of sense. That, that, that makes sense to move forward with that stuff, give people some work to do now, try to create some of those jobs now. I, I, I agree. I just didn't know if there's any concern about funding, not even there in the future, but granted that.
We, there will be grant money that we rely on to fund things, and it will be pulled back. That is gonna happen. I, I mean, we're, you know, we don't know exactly where, but that, you know, that, that'll be the fun of the budget year.
But you're worried about this encumbered money? They can't pull it back for the union?
It'd be hard. It would be really difficult, and both the federal, I mean, both the federal and the state government are very committed to this program, the transportation...
It's a jobs program, which is another thing.
Right, and, and you think about what they're funding early and putting extra money into is the community block development grants. So, which are also around infrastructure and small business. So, you know, people already have their eyes forward on all levels of government of how we get out of this. Um, and public construction jobs, one, it's easier to do a safety plan, but it's, it's pretty amazing on our, our projects now, how many local people are working on them. Like, we, we have local businesses, like, our, in our windows, they're doing work at the new school. So, you know, those are all local folks working and a local business.
That's good. Any questions? Any other questions? Omar, do you have any questions? Nothing? Okay. Uh, for Jen or for Val? Is that you waving your hand, Peg, or you cleaning your camera? Uh, for Jen or for Val? Is that you waving your hand, Peg, or you cleaning your camera?
The camera.
All right, then I'll take a motion to approve 15,000 for legal services.
I'll move.
Second?
We have, we have a motion on the floor for sub nominal appropriation from Free Cash for 15,000 dollars. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Posed, abstaining. Thank you. Um, the other items on the agenda are not going to be dealt with this evening. I don't know if Counselor Kuzinski has found anything else in the CPA tax exemption. I will have to press him because that has to be to the ballot by the September if we're going to do it, so. Uh, it's on the agenda, Mayor, and I don't know if you've thought about this, but that's going to be in the assessors' bailiwick if we do a CPA tax exemption. And I'm wondering, I wanted, uh, Counselor Kuzinski to, to get some information from them if they feel this is a burden. Uh, I don't think it's a lot and I really would love to do it. But do you, have you any comment on if the assessors can handle this kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's a betterment. We've, we've had to do similar things, um, in, in the past. And it, you know, i- is it more administrative work? Yes, I think we can hand, you know, um, handle it. I, I think now more than ever, um, such a thing, um, you know, and I, I don't want to talk too much about it without Counselor Kuzinski, who, who's, you know, got a lot of, of, of research on this, um, just knowing his thoroughness. But I, I, I think the time right now is to put that on pause and look for other relief. Um, and not, not give money out of like housing, you know, and, and doing a housing, you know, uh, relief fund for renters. Um, you know, for looking, uh, to, you know, I'm worried about recreation and parks and rec. And people love our parks and, and they should. But if, if that budget or those monies or like this summer, the, like, think about the last couple of months, fees and, and regular, I mean, at this point, the parks would be starting to take reservation for gazebos. And, you know, I mean, that revenue, John runs a really tight budget. But if the fees aren't going to come in, um, you know, how do we place that? And that would be CPA. And, and I think about other smaller projects, um, that can make a big difference for quality of life. Uh, but I'm most excited about our, our looking at a rental relief fund out of our housing bucket. Um, that's, that's super exciting. And if the state's going to put money into housing, um, then maybe we can get a, a developer um, interested in doing some affordable housing or rehabbing, um, existing property, which, which have always been in the works. I just feel like it's going to be more in the works because it's a, you know, Congress is, is thinking about it.
Well, I have to say that my main concern was administration, not whether or not we can do it. I don't think it's a lot of money. The committee didn't feel it was a lot of money. And I don't think it's going to hurt those other things you mentioned. But it does help seniors especially and low income people, even if it's a small amount. Um, so I'm still in favor of it. My concern was always administration. And I think that's up to the Board of Assessors to give us an opinion. But I'll wait for Kuzinski's research on that. Do either of the other counselors have any opinion on that? I, I think I'm going to make an effort to get JP here for the next meeting. Bill?
I'm good.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I would like to see it kind of play out to its logical conclusion so that we can make decisions about all of these things. And I agree that the housing is really important. And I want to understand all of this with the facts as we can get them and then vote up or down based on that. So, yeah, I really would like to play this out, you know, with all the data we can possibly get.
You hit the nail on the head. We need to know if we can at least get a fairly educated guess on what figure would be.
Yep.
People that might apply. And JP seemed to indicate that because of the other exemptions we have for taxes, we might be able to get a figure of what, um, what this would mean to the budget.
Yep.
But given, given other cities and towns which are larger and it's not a very large amount, the CPA committee wasn't concerned at the time. Of course, this was passed a long time ago.
Yeah.
And, uh, yes. So that being said, I have nothing else. Does anybody have anything else?
Yep.
Okay.
No, 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 hello, hello, hello.
Oh, the wave of the hand. You need to hold it like this. So I, Mayor, go ahead.
Um, I just, uh, my apologies for stepping, um, away from the camera, um, during the meeting, but just Mayor Communications, uh, started conversations and, um, our auditor started, uh, or, or started conversations as well. Uh, given just the extremely fluid fiscal situation that we're in, which will, I think, get more fluid. Um, we're preparing or, or trying to figure out a monthly report on that gives a top line, top line figures of what's going on with our budget month, month by month. As far as like, you know, the concerns, well-founded concerns that our financial team has about collection of, of excise. And, um, you know, only 23% of our property taxes come from the banks, you know, from an escrow account. So, you know, it's always better when, you know, you know, you're getting money from the bank than people walking in and paying their bills. So, you know, it, to, to watch those levels and, and whatnot and to get that into, you know, a top line report on a monthly basis. And they're, you know, as, as Val kind of demonstrated today, um, you know, there are reports we can pull. So we, we've been pushing around ideas, just the beginning conversation of that that would, and a report that might start in like July or August. Um, so every month counsel and the public would be informed about where our accounts stand and what we're missing and if there are cuts coming up from the state, that this is what it's going to, this is what it's going to affect.
I know the last time we met, Val, I'll get to you because you had said, said Val that we were up to date, but that was the March expenditures and revenue collection. You were feeling, you said like property taxes, I think it was 75% or something like that. And you said that the COVID situation wouldn't really raise its ugly head until the eighth, end of April. Can we get a report on where our revenues stand and expenses at the end of April, the end of May? Even if it's a simplified thing, I don't want every damn, every budget, but it, how, how, how easy is that to do? I'm just curious if we're going to be hurting in tax collection, for instance, once this COVID thing comes through at the end of April, you might have a better opinion, better idea. Val, I was.
Um, I will tell you, I just got the last, Hato just texted me the last batches from March or, uh, just came in. So I'm going to finish March up with the new numbers and send that out. But the report that I send the finance committee monthly has both the revenue and expenditure versus what was budgeted for the.
That's true. Yes, okay.
Yes. So that same report could also go to counsel. The problem is we don't really have those numbers till the end of the next month. I know counsel was asking for them two weeks into the next month, but it's not, it's really not feasible for all of the tax collections, all of the general receipts, all of the water sewer to be posted and have the report done at that time. If it is, I will. But it, it's very unlikely that it's done at that time. Usually it's the end of the next month. So, but that will give you, you know, where we are in the budget. And it will give you with the two columns I added, it will show you this year versus last year and, and exactly what's happening. And, and I can even do a little commentary when I send it out about any, um, you know, like, uh.
Warning?
Want to look at. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I personally, I'm going to get to you Peg right now. Personally, I feel that you should send out a report that's complete. That if you're, if it's halfway.
Right.
You don't have all the information. I'd rather have the complete report. So whenever that is feasible. Peg, you had a question?
And maybe it's been answered, but maybe not. Um, so as, as we have, um, as you make expenditures into your COVID account that you've designated as COVID. And as you get reimbursements back in the year 2049, or whenever that happens.
Yeah.
How are we going to, how, how, will there be something that the council can have that says this is what the account was? This is all the money we spent and we labeled it COVID-19. And then as the money comes in that offsets that or reimburses that, will we be able to see that really clearly that, that said, we spent a million dollars and we got 400,000 back? Is there something that will show us that? And I realize we might be talking next year for this, but how is that going to be reconciled? Because you'll, you're going to be spending the money now. But.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, the accounts, yeah, the accounts have been set up and they're coded. Um, and, and perhaps Val or Jen have experience when these checks come back in. Um, I, I think, you know, my, my answer to, you know, when we get the reimbursement, we're going to know it goes against our COVID expense because it's going to be from FEMA. Um, but I, I, I don't know about the detail. Like I, I hesitate just, this is a little different than a microburst. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping it will be for submission, da, 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 da. But, but the way that Chief Modder and Deputy Chief Heneman has described it is they want to see one submission from a municipality, you know, like, I don't know, say one for the last quarter of, uh, 2019 and then by quarter. So I, I don't know, I, I don't know the detail. I'm not holding my, my breath. I'm worried, you know, I, I, I just would love to see 75% of it to come back. Um, I don't know, Val or, or Jen, you've seen how those reimbursements come back, like what detail we get?
Go ahead, Val.
Uh, well, generally we know what we filed for. So, um, timing wise, we should be able to tell what came in against that. If the fire department keeps a, a copy of what they filed for FEMA and the lease and, and if we could centralize and keep those, we might be able to tell what we've received against it.
So when, so when the municipality, when we, as you say, Mayor, when we have to submit a singular request to the government.
Yep.
Will that be something that, and, and I'm hoping the answer is yes, that the council will see that detail of what you've submitted to the government? So we will know along with you what you have and we can kind of be aware. I, I'm, I absolutely want to know how much we've spent and when you submit that request to the federal government.
I was going to say if Val, if you could include any expenses that are in the COVID-related accounts on your report, as they come out, we've spent this much money on COVID-related expenses. If that's easy, let it keep us up to date because you already do a report for us. Is that possible? I got enough.
Well, the.
The money on COVID-related health expenses yet?
The, the Department 5200 is in the budget, so you'll see it as that gets spent.
That's the number, 5200 is the number?
Right, right. The month, the one that they just, um, put 75,000 into.
Okay.
Right.
That is right in the expenditure report. And every time something gets spent up against that, it will show in the report.
There you go. That's fine.
It, is it?
Well.
Wait.
But that's only the 75,000. The other things, it's a combination of things. There is a code in payroll. We'd have to run a printout of the code at the end of the year with, you know, that total. Then there's the school payroll. There's a code in there. And then, um, on the warrants, we're tracking them in a folder that will all have to be put together. That's a little more difficult. Like you'll see the actual expenditures in, in that budget account as they happen.
Right.
But obviously that is not necessarily the number we're going to request to be reimbursed at.
No, it's not. No.
Right. And so those two things are a little different. It's what we've spent and then what we're going to ask to get back might be different. So what I'm, all I'm suggesting is that when we make, when we send that letter to the government that says we need, we spent, this is all of our criteria. We're trying to match up what the government wants us to do. I would like to know that as well as what we physically out of pocket spent and what we're going to, like those three things and what we're going to get back when we start getting it back.
So we're, we're, I will say right now, we are tracking and coding, um, COVID expenses that will exceed what the government is going to say is, can even be submitted.
Correct.
One.
Yeah.
Um, two, that submission, you know, there's, there's some detail in it. It's a city report, but it's a detail to, to FEMA. And, and it goes into, it could be all the things that Val just described. But even though they say we'll get reimbursement, I don't trust that, that we will. And remember, right now it's 75% of whatever they say is eligible. And then the 75% can, can change.
Right.
That said, once, and we don't have guidance from the US Treasury yet, then the second pot of money that is not revenue replacement is the CARE Act, right? So stimulus number three. Um, and, and the idea right now is you have FEMA and then you go to the CARES Act to see what you can get there.
Yep.
Well, I like the fact that you're going everywhere you can. If there's money out there, I'm sure the financial team will find it, but I'm hoping you will because our budget is being impacted in the revenue. I was disheartened by the fact that, uh, our Democratic colleagues at the Congress gave in on aid to local governments and state governments in the current package. Uh, because I think our state and every state is going to be hurting with tax collection, obviously. And then that will trickle down to less money for cities and towns. So, um, anywhere we have a possibility of.
Yeah.
I hope that people can find it and we can get it. Obviously it's going to be difficult, but, and we may not see it for two years. I remember the.
The reimbursement? Oh, yeah, easy. I mean, right. FEMA is, is historically not super fast turnaround. So I don't know if we're going to be able to make assumptions like we're submitting a hundred dollars. We expect 75 back from FEMA, so here's the claim for the 25%. Or, you, you know, I mean, we just don't know how that's going to work. Um, the money that we didn't get out of the last 3.5, version 3.5 of the, the stimulus package, I, I think more had to do, I mean, my, I think I have a lot of priorities. But what frightens me the most right now is rent relief and small businesses. And without payroll protection and without the EDIL grant refunded, it, you know, it is a cliche to say that it would decimate the small businesses in East Hampton, but it will more than decimate. We will lose more than one in 10. And, and I know that a lot of them are hanging on. Um, and, and think about what is canceled, right? I mean, we stay safe by shutting down everything and you don't have cultural chaos. And what does that do to Conde Street? And, you know, I mean, you guys, you guys know, and, and that, the fact that this 3.5 funds those programs is, and, and gives us as a small, um, city a, a, the opportunity to go after some money that can, we, we can administer as a small business relief fund is, it, I'm, I'm good. I mean, you know, I'll, there are a lot of fights to be had, but right now we don't come out of this at, you know, well at all if, if we lose our, our small businesses. And it's not just retail. Um, kudos, kudos to Jen. Uh, because I did, I found a grant from the AG for small business relief and said, we need to do it. And, uh, Jen submitted it within four hours for, you know, how much was the grant for, Jen?
Well, I requested the maximum, which per municipality is $50,000, but, you know.
Every penny counts.
That's right.
I know, I know you're home and everything, but you're able to search for these grants online? I mean, that's, that's what you're doing. You're looking everywhere, every government entity. It's a helpful, helpful grant. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I gave up sleep for the pandemic.
Yes, laying off employees, teachers and everything because of this. So I know you all are too, so.
Yeah.
Anyway. Any other questions for the mayor or the mayor? Do you have anything else? The mayor, do you have anything else?
No.
That was a no, okay. All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Peg, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Was I supposed to do all of these as a roll call? I just.
Yes.
So, do I have to go back over all of these and do a roll?
No, well, I, I will.
I forgot. I remember you said.
But yes, as per the, um, the response from the Attorney General's Office when I asked them that question, all votes are to be roll-call votes for any committee at any time when you are remote.
I, I would suggest you've sent out a big reminder in bold for people like me who forget these things.
I don't know how much more clear I can do it, but sure, I'll send it out again.
Obviously, some of us need.
Wow, all right, okay. I'll try a different language this time.
I'm sorry, in my defense, at the beginning of the meeting.
I'm not the only one.
It was a roll call, I would've said, all right. All right, we adjourn the meeting. You guys be safe, okay?
You too. Take care, everyone, thank you.
Bye.